I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have Select Woman Heavy is going to be participating remotely due to an exposure. And we are going to a potential exposure. And we're going to, all votes tonight will be taken with a roll call vote. First item on the agenda is Boarding Committee reports. I signed the PR 2312 for Julie O'Brien, the PR 2312 for the Select Board, and the PR 2313 for Julie O'Brien. Grants, gifts, and donations. We have the Police Department donation from Alfred and Sandra Bellows in the amount of $150. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Yes.
I noticed that in the past, we've, this is the first time I've noticed in a number of months, a donation to the Police Department that didn't, wasn't listed as anonymous. So is this a new policy that the Police Department is having?
I don't believe so. I believe that this donation was, the donor does not wish to remain anonymous. They're only listed anonymous when the donor wishes to be anonymous. And the Chief is here, and I can ask her to opine if you'd like.
That would be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Patty, would you come up and explain?
Sir? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. That is correct. We go by what the donor wishes. So if they wish to remain anonymous, we put it forward to you as an anonymous donation. If they don't have a request that it remain anonymous, we provide you with their name.
Thank you.
May I inquire?
Yes.
As far as being anonymous, I know that the town administrator said she knows who the anonymous donors are. And the police, the prior police chief said he knew who they were. Do the other police members of the Police Department know?
They do not. I believe we addressed that at one of the meetings as well.
Yeah, they're not known. But this particular item on the agenda is not an anonymous donation.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. And it's the first time I've seen it, as I said, in a number of months, that it hasn't been listed as anonymous. And I thought maybe, since we have a new police chief, we have a new bit of transparency. But apparently, we don't.
No. No, we go with what the donor wishes.
Well, I guess I'm troubled by that, Chief, because how do we know that the anonymous donor doesn't have a pending criminal case?
Because those are things that I can look into before I submit it to you for approval?
Well, it seems that if you had a policy of not accepting anonymous donations, it would certainly seem to be a lot more transparent. And you wouldn't, I don't know, it just seems like, it's really not anonymous because you know the town administrator knows. And how many members of the Board of Selectmen know? Do my members know?
No.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No, no.
So, you know, it just, it just, the optics are terrible. They're just terrible. And I believe in the past, I tried to move, to make it a change, to become a policy. And of course, it didn't go anywhere.
So hold on, Jerry, one second. The Chief would like to comment.
Do we have concerns about the donation as it's put forward tonight with the known donor?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other, any further comment?
Just for the sake of conversation, Jerry, was it because the donation was to the Police Department?
Yes, yes, because how do you know? I mean, let's face it, the police have an awful lot of authority. And they stop people, and they charge people, you know, that's their function. And when you have people anonymously contributing to a police department where the police chief knows, you know, who they are, it just, it's not anonymous. It becomes secret. It's a secret donation.
However...
I find that...
You know, I would probably be more afraid of the Building Inspector, the Board of Health. I mean, you could say that for, you could say that for everyone. So I wouldn't want to just pick on the Police Department.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe a policy that the Board of Selectmen does not allow any anonymous contributions to anyone. I mean, it seems to me that the Board of Health, they seldom, I don't recall even seeing any donations. It seems that Council on Aging, and they're all, the people are all listed, and the Police Department, they seem to be the ones that have people donating to them, you know?
All right, well, thank you.
You're right, you're right, Selectman Walker. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I say that for the reason...
If you don't be inspected, it'll be a problem.
I say that for the reason that, you know, the Highway Department or any of our departments, if someone wants to donate some money, I mean, especially an amount like this, that's probably not going to mean whether someone stops them and gives them a ticket. Or if it was the Board of Health that your sepulchre system isn't flagged. I don't know.
I don't know. This isn't on the agenda, so I don't want to discuss it tonight.
Well, actually, it is, because we're talking about...
And not, no, what's on the agenda is the acceptance of this one donation for $150. Policy is not on the agenda. So I'll enter, any further comment?
And I would move, I would move to make it a policy that the Board of Selectmen does not accept anonymous contributions in any, for any department.
Now, are you saying anonymous or any donation?
Anonymous. That's the problem, anonymous. Because it's not anonymous if some of the members of the departments know who it's from. The leaders, the police chief who knows, it's not anonymous. It's secret. It's secret money.
But this one, this one's not anonymous.
That's correct. And it's the first time in months that we've had somebody give their name.
And I mean, Jerry, and not to be argumentative, but the Fire Department, everyone, I mean, they have, it's not just stopping you on the road, but the Fire Department have the ability when they check things in your house and stuff. So I don't know. Certainly, I think maybe one shoe should fit all, but certainly, you would not, you would not want monies to not be donated to our departments. And it's just...
And if the person is not going to donate because they've got to be known, then that really, that goes to my argument. They're not doing it because, because they've got an ulterior motive for donating it, and they don't want their name known.
Okay, so...
What is the, what is the harm in saying we won't accept anonymous, secret money? Any department.
The Chief, did you want to say something, Patty?
I did, please. Are we having this discussion tonight about advocating why we should have anonymous donations or no?
I think Select Woman Heavy would like to, to know, I think, a little more information around why, why we don't.
Okay, so one of the reasons that I support anonymous donations is because of the very facts that she's making. Why would I want my officers having the perception of skewing a decision on the road because somebody made a donation? With anonymous donations, when the Chief of Police is the only one who knows it, and it doesn't make it down to the officers, how is there any implication that they did get a ticket or didn't get a ticket because of an amount of money that they donated? In the current climate with law enforcement, what if we have people who want to donate and support the Police Department but don't want their neighbors knowing that they're donating either how much money they have to donate or that they support the police? There are a number of safety reasons why somebody might want to make anonymous donations to support their police departments opposed to being known. That's why I support anonymous donations. I don't question my integrity. When I put forward a donation for you guys to do, if it's anonymous, look in-house, see if they have anything pending. I'm doing my job before I put it forward to you. It's not making it to the people downstairs, who are the ones who are actually on the road doing the decision-making. It stays between those of us who keep it anonymous. So I think there is an argument for the acceptance, whether it's Police, Fire, or any of the other departments that accept donations, to keep it anonymous. And I think that they revolve around the same issues as to why she doesn't want it anonymous.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I believe that all of our department chairs and all of our staff in the town of Newbury operate at a high level of integrity.
I'm not, I'm not, don't, don't put words in my mouth. I'm not questioning anyone's integrity. I'm just saying that the optics look terrible because it looks like there's a secret fund. And I have to tell you, if they want to support the police, I don't know how many calls I've gotten this year to support the police, the telephone, you know, some man with a very deep voice saying he's calling, you know, to collect money for the police. You know, if you want to support the police, I'm sure that people can contribute to those people who call repeatedly to collect money.
No, I understand what you're saying, as far as scammers go.
But that's not local, that's not local.
Yeah, that's different.
Let's wait, Jerry, let's wait till you're here if we want to have this. Go ahead.
This piece is important, too. The Newbury Police Department doesn't ever call anyone to solicit for donations. So if anyone here or at home gets phone calls from a deep-voiced person asking to support the Police Department, it is not the Newbury Police Department. We post that on our social media, we share that in our trainings all the time. We do not solicit donations from the public. So I just, however that plays into decisions that get made here, I need to say that out loud.
Okay, thank you. That's very important, the town of Newbury. I want everyone out there to understand and to know, the town of Newbury does not solicit through phone calls. If you get a phone call, the Police, the Police Department, if you get a phone call, please hang up because it's not the town of Newbury.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, so, any further comment?
I just want to say, I think Jerry has a motion that she, is that correct, Julie?
It wasn't...
She has a mo, an open motion...
She made a motion.
Right now, on the table. And what I want to say about that...
Hold on a second, okay? Hold on a second.
Sure.
There was a motion made, was there a second?
No.
No, so the motion drops.
Before, before I second it or not, can I make my comment?
Discussion, someone has to second it.
Yeah, in order for us to discuss it, somebody would have to second it, but it's not, but having...
Okay, I'll second it, but I want to discuss it. Is that appropriate?
What's your comment?
My comment is, is I understand Jerry's point. And I do think for a future Select Board meeting, you know, when she talks about anonymous, there's a difference between anonymous, where a person is really anonymous, and someone that donates and, you know, signs the letter to, for example, the Police Department or any other department and requests it to be anonymous. And I think it's worth a discussion for the Board in the future of whether or not, you know, we can accept anonymous donations. I don't want to give up any of that money that anybody wants to give. But at the same time, maybe, maybe they really should be anonymous. And that the accepting department doesn't even know who that person is, so that we can continue to accept it. That's all, that's my point. Does that make any sense to anybody?
Yeah, I think what is going to happen is we will put this on a future agenda.
Because I would have answered, I would have answered that, it's funny, it can't be totally anonymous because you have to vet the person to see if there's a reason not.
Listen, I'm going to put this on an agenda, an upcoming agenda, but we're not going to have this conversation tonight. So I have a motion in a second for Alfred Sandra Bellows, $150 for a Police Department donation.
Madam Clerk, I did, I did move, it was seconded, so we have to have a vote. I'm sorry, those are Robert's rules. You can put it on for another day because I know where this is going, but let's have a vote. A motion was made and it's seconded.
What's her, what's her motion?
That this Select Board does not accept any anonymous donations from anyone.
Okay. I need to have a roll call vote, so we'll roll call, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, no.
Jay Arcolby?
Jay Arcolby, no.
Dana Packer?
Jerry, I think your verbiage is incorrect, so I'm going to vote no, so we can talk about it in the future.
Alicia Greco, no. Okay, so that motion failed. So now we have a Police Department donation from Alfred and Sandra Bellows for $150. You have a first.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Okay. No, we had that, we had discussion, we already had a motion.
Yeah, you just need to roll call.
Yeah, so Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Yes. Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, next is a Green Marsh, Great Marsh Green Crab Trapping Program grant for $12,500. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Tracy, this is the one from the state, DMF?
Listen, you've got to go through it.
Oh.
Especially where we got Jerry and remote. Okay, so, hold on a second, Dana.
Yes.
So this is, explains what, Tracy, because she's over there, too.
It is the grant award from DMF.
From the DMF.
Okay. Dana, did you have a question?
I have a discussion about it. Did we, we seconded it already, right?
Yeah.
My discussion is, is we got the perfect people in the room right now to talk about this. And who is going to be responsible for the program? And how are we going to implement the program? It's a great program, we need to do it, I like the money, but those are my questions.
Shellfish Constable's here.
And Dana, it has been running in our town for over, I mean, Peter Fippen and I, through Bruce Tar, were the people that put this in place for the state. And it's been at least, it's been five years, Tracy?
At least.
And it's been in our, it's been in our town for over five years, and it's worked well.
I understand, I understand, I understand that, but we've made a lot of changes recently to the people that are involved with this. I just want to know who's responsible for the program. That's, that's all.
So the Shellfish Constable, do you want to come up and speak?
I can answer any questions, I can speak a little bit to what it's about.
Come on up. Thank you. Announce your name, announce your name and what your role is.
John Lucy Shellfish Constable.
Thank you.
That sounds so weird. It is the, it's a project that's in place in town and funded actually through some town fundings, but this particular installment is a DMF grant that is used to help mitigate the problem of green crabs. They're an invasive species that are really adversely affecting the clamming industry. So we have some participants in that program that have been aggressively collecting and disposing of these nuisance crabs and really helping our clam flats. So this is helping to fund that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions, Jerry?
Yes, my one question is, I think somebody just asked it, who's, who is in charge? Is that the...
The Shellfish Constable.
Shellfish Constable, okay. And in Section 1, it says the town shall be responsible for providing the personnel necessary. Are they paid or are they volunteers?
They're harvesters.
Tracy, can you respond? Come on up. John coming up again. Jerry?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, just to clarify, if it needs to be clarified, yes, that is, they are subsidizing the removal. They are paying us, you know, per pound for the removal and disposal of these clams, of these crabs.
And it's usually going to our clambers, or people working on the water, that are residents of our town, Jerry.
Okay.
And that was the scope of the program. It's a huge problem to get rid of green crabs. It's immense. And actually, like I said, a lot, you know, Peter Fippen and I, with Bruce Tar, saw the need to be able to mobilize our clambers and interested people within our town. So the state put forth this type of program. And Tracy, is this the year that we're actually going to throw some funds into it, or is that coming in the next year?
We did. The Select Board approved, I think, $20,000 from our funds.
And trust me, it's not only soft-shell clams, it's sand, sand, you know, it's the whole system, you know, supposedly destabilizing marsh bankings and on and on and on. We have a real problem with the European green crab. And this is probably the only way that seems to work. I mean, Alex is here, he's one of the guys that really participates in it, I think. Alex, and you're selling it for bait, too, to other places, right? So...
That's correct, yeah, at food and bait.
Yep, so I mean, if the program is working pretty well, and it's been, it's been working well in Ipswich, Ipswich...
Essex, Gloucester.
Essex and Gloucester, and Raleigh. Raleigh's going to do it this year, no?
I don't know, they haven't.
They haven't been, but it's up and down the seacoast.
Can somebody answer, how long have we had a problem with the green crab?
Hundred years.
Hundred years?
Hundred years.
And so they're not native, so they came here a hundred years ago?
No, from Northern Europe. And they have written in history where people used to put snow fence and chicken wire eighty years ago around the clam flats to try to stop them from getting in. So they've been around a long time. The only thing that supposedly, Jerry, is a cold winter. And our green crabs come up from New York, so they're affected by a cold winter. But Maine is having a real problem because their green crabs come out of Greenland, and that subspecies is really not affected by cold. And Maine's in real trouble, their soft-shell clam industry is in real trouble with the, they eat the spat, they eat the small, small seed, and they're destructive, and they show pictures of them going right through a mature clam.
Yeah, and they're not edible for humans, right?
That's what, if, that's the whole, that's the whole secret. The whole secret is finding some way to be able to, you know, they're small, they're sandy. The chitin was going to be used for getting rid of arthritis and stuff, but they're so full of sand. Everyone's trying to find a way to make it, you know, commercially viable for these, for these critters.
Right now, I think it's just cat food.
Well, and bait, the bait industry is big.
There's a company in New Hampshire that's fermenting them into...
Yeah, making them booze.
Yeah.
Anything else for me?
No, I'm not, no further questions.
Thank you. Okay. Any, any further discussion? Okay. I'm going to entertain a roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Jeff Walker, yes.
Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, public hearings, none. New business, review, approve, and sign appointments. We have the appointment of a Fish Commissioner next on the agenda. And I think the bylaw reads that we, I don't think I know, that we need to meet with the current elected Fish Commissioners that are here, and the five-member Board speaks with the elected Commissioners to appoint one in their absence. So I'm going to ask the two elected Commissioners to come on up to the table, please. Grab a chair. Yeah.
We need to sit or stand?
No, no, sit down. You can just come right up here so we can all discuss. We're going to have a conversation. Yeah. Select Woman Heavy, as you can see, too.
Introduce yourselves.
I'm Charlie Colby. I'm a Fish Commissioner, I've been a Fish Commissioner or a Shellfish Constable for forty-two years now in Newbury.
Wow.
Little to no money from the town.
Yeah.
Been all doing it for, just to keep things going.
Thank you.
So that's me.
You're welcome.
My name's Jeff Janbrun, I'm a Fish Commissioner.
Okay. So we have a vacancy on your Board, and you have a three-member Board?
Yes.
And...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, well, you still do, but you only have two now. So this position is up for election in May. What, do we have a date? Do we know what the date?
May 9th, I think.
The election is May 9th this year, I believe. So we have two gentlemen, Augustus Campatelli and Alexander Mason, that are interested in this Board voting to appoint until the election in May. So...
Why can't we hold off until May instead of...
Do you guys, do you guys...
Putting it on us?
I think we should wait also, I think we should wait for the election, let the towns...
Well, how often, how often do you guys meet?
We only need to meet one more time in the next couple of months, and that's not going to be a problem.
The two guys can handle it anyway, right?
Yeah. It's not something that we're going to need to vote on.
I actually don't have a problem with that.
I think I would absolutely, definitely rather...
Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Dana?
I don't have a problem with that.
Jerry?
No, I would actually move to, to, well, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. This actually came to our attention back in the end of November, and it would have been longer, but then because of circumstances what they were, we couldn't meet until now. So if you guys are fine with it, I'm going to move to pass over appointing the Fish Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. I need a roll call vote?
You can put two on the ballot in May instead of one, right?
Well, who's on, who's on the ballot next?
Probably me, my term's coming up, yep.
Okay, so yeah, there'll be two, two...
And then each will be a one-year term, and Jeffries will be a three-year term.
Whatever, so the, whatever.
I guess that's a question.
The open position, the open position, he has one year left on his term. So there'll be a one-year term, and then there'll be your three-year term. So you'll be running for your seat, and then there'll be an open seat. And I'm hoping you two gentlemen would be pulling out papers for that and running. You'd have to do it anyways to run. The appointment, even if we were to appoint you, would only be until May 9th. So, any, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Jerry?
What is the difference between the Fish Commissioner and the Shellfish Constable?
Jeff?
We, the Fish Commissioners, don't have an enforcing power. So we need any rules and regulations that need to be enforceable, we need a Constable in order to do that.
You guys make policy.
Right, we make policy.
We're basically, if I can put it on you, basically like a Fish Advisory Board, like a Shellfish Advisory Board, that's what Ipswich uses instead of Fish Commissioners, but it's pretty much the same thing.
Plus, you couldn't clam if you were, have, if you did have those powers of enforcement, right?
Correct.
Oh, as a Constable, you can, as a Commissioner.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you can as a Commissioner, yep. But if you were a Constable, you can't clam.
So the Select, just I want to be clear, the Select Board is the policy setting. It would come up from you guys, would bring it to us.
Right, we make recommendations to the Select Board, and the Select Board usually over the years always, has mostly gone along with us.
And hopefully, Peter did a really good job on taking things to the state, and hopefully, that continues to, because your reign, your reign closure is lousy, so you've got to, you know, do things such as that, so...
But it's been, in fact, for thirty-something years, and he could change that a bit.
So I know, I've dealt with Peter a lot, I haven't dealt with, you know, he comes before us. I don't know when you guys reorganize. Please, please, come to us for whatever you need.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
The clamming industry is very important to the town of Newbury, and I, we can't, we have to protect it. So we're here to support you in anything that you can, that you need. Okay, I want to be abundantly clear by that.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you both for your service, because you're both, you're all elected. So I'm going to entertain a motion to pass over the appointment of the Fish Commissioner.
Second.
Okay, I need a roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jeff Janbrun, you're going to vote on this as well, because, well, does he have to vote? Do we have to vote? Because you were going to vote on the Commissioner. Yeah, I would, I would vote, yeah. So can you, Jeff Janbrun votes yes, and Charlie Colby?
Yep.
Yes, and the Chair votes yes as well. Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to declare for surplus the 2012 Ford Expedition, 88,705 miles from the Fire Department.
Motion to declare surplus.
Second.
Any discussion? Jerry? No? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Arcolby?
Yes.
And Dana Packer?
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. We need to approve a one-day liquor license for decanted for the old Newbury bonfire scheduled on January 14th, 2023?
I'm going to recuse from the bonfire decisions.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? This is still going off on January 14th, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes. For those who have not deposited their old Christmas trees at the, you know, at the fire stations to be collected for the bonfires, it's not too late, is it?
No, I don't believe it is. I believe they're collecting them until the twelfth.
I believe it's the twelfth, and the dumpsters are still in front of the fire.
Yeah, the twelfth, you can still collect until the twelfth, and the dumpsters are in front of the fire departments.
Okay, great, thank you. Good to know.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay. I have another one-day liquor license for Dan Clapp, sixteen twenty-four meterie for the Old Newbury bonfire. Is there a motion?
Close the door.
You close the door? Or just shut it a little bit, it's gonna be open.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Just close it a little bit.
Leave it a crack.
Yeah. Is there a motion, Dana?
I motion to accept a one-day liquor license from Dan Clapp for the Old Newbury bonfire dated January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco votes yes. I wanna grab J.R. Yeah. Dana, can you grab J.R.?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, J.R., that's over. Sorry, didn't mean to yell.
Okay, so now we have the town of Newbury business license renewals.
Now, we get a vote on the historical commission.
Oh, I just checked it off, that it was done. I checked off the wrong box. I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna vote on a date for the first meeting of the local historical study committee. The date is gonna be January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. The board has to vote, 'cause this is a new committee, the board has to vote on that date. Julie, Julie, I'm sorry, has already reached out to the membership of that committee and has confirmed that date, so that works for them. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff Walker? Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jay Akolby?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco votes yes. Okay. Now we have business license renewals. There's quite a few of these, so I think what I'd like to do is read them off, and then if anybody has anything they want, they can just put a hold on it, and we'll come back and discuss it, so...
Do you want me to rattle them off? Do you need a break, or you're good?
Sure. No, you can rattle them off.
Okay. So you say you wanna go through?
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the following business license renewals for twenty-twenty-three.
J&amp;M Valpon, DBA Valpon Towing Service, eighty-six Rear Newbury Port Turnpike General Business Towing Service. Colby Jackman, DBA Outdoor Dog Training and Trails, forty-eight Low Street Dog Training at Client Sites and on Public Trails, no onsite boarding or daycare per zoning enforcement officer. A&amp;M Motors Incorporated, Anthony Barbaris, four to six Newbury Port Turnpike Used Car Dealers License, Class Two. Sarah Van Golden, DBA Adlin Road Conference and Retreat Center, forty-six Elm Street, Calmen Victoria. Ampit Incorporated, Mohammed Al Madani, thirty-four High Road Used Car Dealers License to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles, online sales only. Mohammed Al Madani, DBA Ampit Incorporated, thirty-four High Road General Business Auto Marine Gas Sales Automotive Repair and Sale of Related Goods. Gary Macheros, DBA Energy Service Incorporated, one-on-one Newbury Port Turnpike Unit Four and Five Auto Repair. Auto Works of Hampton Falls Incorporated, care of Edwin Carrier and Michael Tartaglioni, eighty-eight Newbury Port Turnpike Used Car Dealers License, Class Two. Pamela Doherty, DBA The Beach Dog Daycare, ninety-six Newbury Port Turnpike Animal Care. Mike, Michelle and Peter Abrin, DBA By Coco, twelve Grove Street Mobile Coffee Trailer. Fit by John, DBA John D. Hormo, Junior, eighty-nine Hanover Street Unit Three, General Business Personal Training. George Kolorus, Georgie Porgie's Ice Cream Factory LLC, DBA The Beach Front, two Northern Boulevard, Calmen Victoria. I will recuse from Waldo, Evan Jesperson, a few folks will take that one at the end.
Okay.
Marley Janicki, DBA Marley Janicki, one ninety-one High Road Sustainable Garden Design and Care. Danvers Butchery, Cheryl Moulton, DBA Newbury Butchery, two Morgan Ave, Calmen Vic. Randall Bandolian, Trustee, DBA Old Newbury Boat Company, eighty-four Newbury Port Turnpike Auto and Marine. Hank Moore, DBA Old Newbury Golf Club Incorporated, three nineteen Newbury Port Turnpike, Calmen Vic. Greg Pugh, DBA Plum Island Beach Coma Restaurant Incorporated, twenty-three Plum Island Boulevard, Calmen Vic. Richard Rocco Incorporated, DBA Plum Island Provisions, twenty-nine Plum Island Boulevard, Calmen Vic. John V. Siemens, DBA Sculpture by Beverly Siemens, two Newman Road, General Business. Lisa Porter, DBA Seacoast Horse and Pet Sitting, forty-eight O'Reilly Road, General Business, Animal Care, Dog Boarding, Dog Daycare and Pets Sitting. Linda M. Deland, DBA Sports and Therapeutic Massage, sixty-five Newbury Port Turnpike General Business Massage Therapy. Matthew Kazaki, DBA Tendercrop Farms, one-on-eight High Road Retail Foods, Calmen Vic Crafts and Gifts. Randall Bandolian, Trustee, Offshore Concepts Conservation Trust, DBA U.S. Number One Auto and Marine, eighty-four Newbury Port Turnpike Used Car Dealers License, Class Two to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles. Reina Bonfa, DBA Walk My Paws, ninety Newbury Port Turnpike Dog Training and Play Care. Donald B. Walton, DBA Walton's Autolab, seventy-eight Hanover Street Auto and Marine. Jody Wilkinson, DBA Wilco Marine Restorations, eighty-four Newbury Port Turnpike Auto and Marine. Michael and Shelby Hall, DBA American Automotive LLC, sixty-one Main Street Automotive Repair. Carnova LLC, Douglas Machado, eighty-six Newbury Port Turnpike Used Car Dealers License, Class Two to buy and sell second-hand motor vehicles.
Is there a second?
You have one more?
No, he said, read that one. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just have a question. I was not at the December third meeting, and I read the meeting minutes, and there was, some of these were put on hold because there was some other things that the board requested that they accomplished, or they haven't accomplished yet. Julie, can you, do you have any information on that? No?
For the business licenses?
For the business, yeah. There was some stuff...
I don't recall that. I don't remember that.
Okay, well, if that's not the case, then I just...
Yeah, I don't recall that. I think we did minutes, we put some minutes.
It was in the minutes.
Yeah, like that we had some minutes that we didn't approve last time because we didn't have a full board, I believe, but not.
What Dana's saying is we approved the license, and they had to take and do certain things for the approval to hold.
I know.
Oh, you mean the liquor licenses?
Oh, the liquor licenses.
To make sure there was liability and all that's...
Okay, so that wasn't the business licenses?
No, that's all liquor.
It was the liquor licenses.
Yeah, you remember how we had to read, that was for on-premise and off-premise, and just to make sure everything was done, yeah.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
Yeah, that's, that's a...
'Cause I wasn't there, so...
That's okay, that was a law that changed, so we had to do that now. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Jay Akolby?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So you're gonna recuse yourself?
Yep.
We have one more. Waldo Evan Jesperson, DBA Jesperson Studio, seven Marsh Meadow Lane, General Business. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Yes?
Jeff Walker?
Yep.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, J.R.
J.R., you come in.
Okay. So all business, finally done. We get to vote to release the tripartite agreement for the Larkin Road culvert. Jerry, you got this email to you earlier, right?
I did.
Okay. That's one for you and one for... Okay, so do you wanna explain to us why you're here?
Good evening, John Collentoni, for the record. So finally, the culvert slash bridge at Larkin Road slash Parish Road is complete. The guardrails were installed on December twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and then inspected by the engineering peer group on the next business day, which happened to be January third. I think they sent a letter to the, you know, the town and the board, and so we've done everything that we can. It's ready to be opened. It's been a few months extra than we originally expected, but it looks great and ready to go.
Thank you.
What kind of motion would we need for Mr. Collentoni?
Just a motion to...
To release. I move to release the Larkin Road culvert tripartite agreement.
Second.
Okay, discussion. So I want the board to understand, one second, Jerry, I'll get to you next. I just want the board to understand that this is gonna release the bond that we're holding for Mr. Collentoni, and that we have accepted Larkin Road. I'm gonna actually, after we release this, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the reopening of that road, 'cause we voted to close it. I think we should vote to reopen it tomorrow, beginning tomorrow. And so that will, this will stop, this will, any relationship between us for this project is now over. He receives his funds. We have a culvert that was replaced and a road reopened. Jerry?
Yes. I know Bayside Engineering, the engineering's from Mr. Collentoni, how would we pronounce his name? But has somebody from the town inspected the bridge?
Yes.
Bayside engineers are our engineers. They're working for the town.
They're the third-party contractor that the town of Newbury's contracted with.
And the DPW director has also been out to inspect as well.
Yes. So the DPW has approved it, they've looked at it, and our third-party engineer, which is Bayside, has also reviewed it and approved it. It meets our standards. It's safe. Any further discussion?
We're gonna take two votes, you said?
Yeah, right now, we're voting to release the bond for Mr. Collentoni.
And then we're gonna vote on opening the bridge.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Akolby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And this also, I'm gonna entertain a motion, actually, we have two other motions, to allow the chair to sign the tripartite agreement as it's indicated on this, all of you. So I'll entertain a motion to have the chair sign.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Akolby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay. Next, I'm gonna entertain a motion to reopen Larkin Road.
Yeah, excuse me, ma'am chair.
Yeah.
I believe that's not on the agenda, and I don't think, I don't think we should do that without giving adequate notice to the people from Larkin Road.
Once the, once this agreement is been released, there's no reason, we can no longer legally keep that road closed. So we're gonna release this. The road needs to reopen.
And that's like the town council?
Yes. Yes, yes. So...
I move to reopen Larkin Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but if we do that tonight, Tracy, is someone gonna be there early enough?
Well, we, that's when we get to discussion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Okay, discussion.
I'm thinking like you, I guess, we might wanna give a day's lag time for the Highway Department to move the barriers and things.
They're, they're prepared. They have it on their agenda for tomorrow.
And they're gonna take that sign down?
And the police department has put up some speed radar boards as well.
So, I mean, the road is gonna reopen. They have all day tomorrow to open it. It's not gonna be like at eight o'clock. It's gonna be NASCAR running through there. It's gonna take a while for, I'm pretty sure. I think it's gonna take a while for residents to realize that it is open.
And in discussion with the chief, she mentioned we're gonna put one of our nice speed sign boards there to keep everybody in check.
Come on up, chief. Mr. Collentoni, can I ask you to have a seat while we...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Collentoni.
Now, did we release John's? He's also at...
Yeah, he's got his, yeah.
Perfect. I actually have had DPW put up the solar speed sign on the pole on Larkin Road that I believe is gonna get the most sunlight, so that it's effective, and it will catch data from the Georgetown into Byfield traffic that way, so we'll at least have some data about the traffic as it goes, so...
And then Merrimack Planning is still doing something to it that...
Once the road reopens, they'll finish their traffic gathering.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes. What is the little gray box that sits on the right side of the road, and it has a red, a red flag? What is that for? It's not a box, it, it almost looks like a little two D two. I mean, it looks...
I'm unfamiliar with any R two D box on the road.
John, do you know what it is?
Yes, I can help with that.
Come on up. I believe it's a transformer of some kind.
Yeah, there's two, I call them handheld, you know, handles on each side of the bridge, because you have the utilities that go underneath. If you ever had to do service or get in there, you're able to do that.
Is that what you're referring to, Jerry?
And they have, they have, they have a flag on each one of them. It's like a green box on each side.
Is that what you're referring to?
Actually, it's gray, gray box, so it's-
Gray screen, yeah.
For the utilities, I guess.
Yeah, utilities access for repairs.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just would like to say that when we, when all this was taking place, I mean, this was a long, drawn-out project, believe me.
Yes, it was.
And I know a lot about the history of the project, and there were some other, I don't want to say stipulations or promises or anything, that we told the people on Larkin Road that we were gonna do to improve the road and to make it a safer place.
Right.
For example, like, I just want to speak of like semi-tractor trailer trucks, and I actually did a lot of research on, on like weight limitations of the culvert and all that, and I, it seems to me like anything that wanted to could drive across that bridge is, is what I discovered doing my research. And I'm wondering if we're gonna have a-
Truck restriction?
Well, no, no, I just want to say, are we gonna continue with the improvements that we told the people on Larkin Road that we were gonna do? And I'll just give you, I'll just give you an example, like, I think we mentioned we're gonna widen it like three feet on, on either side?
No, no, right now, the road's not gonna be scheduled to be widened.
Okay.
Right now, we have lowered the speed limit, the speed limit on the road is about 25 miles, miles per hour. Merrimack Valley Planning is looking at traffic, they're doing a traffic impact study. I believe the city of Georgetown would like to collaborate and somehow talk about trucks. Tracy, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, actually, what, not through Georgetown, but we're working with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to consider applying for heavy truck restriction, a weight limitation, although, you know, I, I don't know what the process is, there is an application and Merrimack Valley's gonna help us with that, but the, the first step is gathering the data. So, that's, we, we did it while the bridge was closed, but we had to stop, we couldn't continue until the bridge reopens. Once it reopens, we're hoping to give it a little time, because like you mentioned, not everyone's gonna know it's open, so we're gonna wait until March, and then we're gonna gather the rest of the data with the, the expectation that Merrimack Valley will give us some recommendations and help us to continue with traffic calming measures, should there be issues with speeding and those types of things, certainly, the PD is aware of it, they've, they've already put the traffic signs up, the speed limit signs up, they've put, as Patty just mentioned, the flashing signs, what are they called?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, speed signs, they put those up. So, as far as widening the roads, we, we never said that we were going to widen the roads, that was one option for traffic calming, we talked about a number of different options, we talked about bus routes, which we've had communications with the superintendent and the bus company, those are ongoing, so-
That was gonna be my next question.
We followed through with everything, and the DPW did do some preliminary projections on what it would cost to widen the road, it would be significant, well, like, in all likelihood, well over a million dollars. But, so, so we followed through with all of them, but no decisions have been, nothing's been voted by the board to, to take action on at this point in time, other than the reduction in the speed limit.
Okay, any further questions? Jeff?
I, a lot of the work that I do, Dana, is through Merrimack Valley Planning, the work I do on the marsh, and that's where our grants are kinda housed, and I've known them for quite a while, and one of the things they really do well is these traffic impact studies, that's what their forte is, and I think it would be really important to understand the impacts of widening that road, and hopefully, as opposed to not widening that road.
I don't think widening the road is gonna make it less calming.
Well, I mean, they, we really want, we want them to be-
Make the traffic go slower.
We want them to bear down on that, because I think it could have adverse impacts being up, and I'm, you know, that's for them, I don't know.
Then you get into stormwater issues and all that.
Right, right.
Well, it's just, people go faster when it's wider, too.
That, right, that would be my concern.
So, we took, we mentioned all those things, we, we talked about them, but no, no votes have been taken yet, but we're, you know, we're moving forward.
Well, I, I just want to add that I think that, for example, if a semi-tractor trailer truck was coming in one way, and for a fire truck or another semi-tractor trailer truck was going in the opposite direction, they're not gonna be able, and Chief, you could probably help me out with this, but they're not gonna be able to, in, in some locations, they're not gonna be able to go by each other. Two, two vehicles of similar size going in opposite direction.
We haven't done any studies with that, and I haven't been involved in the conversations thus far with Merrimack Val- Valley Planning, so, you know, to give an official statement about what would happen or how it would happen, I'm not prepared to do that tonight.
But I will say-
I don't recall ever hearing stories about tractor trailers having to back out of Larkin Road, I don't, it was-
You mean prior, prior-
Yeah, all these vehicles existed when the road closed, it hasn't been closed for a hundred years.
So, not only that, but the width of Larkin Road is not unique to Larkin Road.
It's similar to my street that I live on, Low Street.
It's very, it's, there's a lot of towns, a lot of roads in Newbury are similar, Watchet Street is another one, it's not, it's not wide. There's just, it, that road has been laid out since the 1800s, it, it's, it will, it's gonna be okay, and if it's not okay, we'll fix it, so.
When, I don't know if it's been done yet, has that road received a line? Patty, do you know, or anyone? Has that road been-
Find down the middle?
They're doing their line striping in the spring.
Gonna do the line striping in the spring?
I don't know if that road's on their list, I'll find out.
Yeah, 'cause that would, I mean, after living on a state highway that has got, you know, when they put down solid lines, that's, changes the name of the game, too, so when there's a line that goes on that road, it'll make a difference.
Okay, any further discussion? No?
No.
All right, seeing none, roll call vote, Jerry Heavey?
No.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
No.
Alicia Greco, yes. Next, we have the town administrator, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a town administrator report.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know, we've, we've completed, for the most part, our musical chairs and, and new hires, we have Lily and Craig, who's going to be our new town accountant, she's taken over the reins from, from Eileen, Gretchen Gerard has assumed the town clerk position at this point in time until the next election, Anne McLaughlin is the assistant town accountant, Kristen Grubbs is the assistant town planner. COVID tests are available for free in the Board of Health Office, anyone, any residents that want them, they're welcome to come in during our normal business hours, and they're available upon request. Budget season is upon us, and I'm working with Erica Jacobson to coordinate the joint budget meetings with the select board, so as soon as we, we finalize those dates, I'll get those off to you, so everyone knows when it will be happening, and I also wanted to mention, there was a recent increase in the pay-as-you-throw program rates of the transfer station, and it's been posted, it's on the website, I understand it's been posted at the transfer station as well, I had, we received, our office received two calls, Board of Health has not received any, but the cost per bag has gone from $1 a bag to $2 a bag. I did ask the, the health agent to, to look at when the last increase was, and there was not another increase. So, when we started this program 10 years ago, a little over 10 years ago, it has always been a dollar a bag. So, given that, coupled with what I'm sure everybody else is seeing in increases in everything, and certainly, the, the trash-to-energy market has had a, a very significant correction in the fact that recycling has gone from, what was, I think, $7 a ton to now, I think the last time I looked at it was over $98 a ton.
Wow.
And the Board of Health made it perfectly clear with Mello when they took over the management of the transfer station, that they wanted recycling to remain free, so that residents would continue to recycle as much as possible. I don't know anywhere else that you get free recycling, so, it is a, you know, an increase, but as I said, it's the first one in 10 years, and I don't know that it's come as any kind of, or it shouldn't come as any kind of shock.
But the recycling is still free, correct?
Recycling is still free, yep.
And I think, Tracy-
Point of order, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe the $1 a bag is a small kitchen white, the small white kitchen bags.
Correct.
Because I was charged $3 for a 30-pound, a black 30-pound, a 30, 30-gallon.
Yeah, I'm referring to the white kitchen bag, yes, the white kitchen bag.
Has the $3 a bag increased?
Yes, because I was just there.
The large-
It's five.
It's five, yeah.
It's $5, so there's a $5 in it, okay.
The 35-gallon bags have gone to fi- from $3 to $5, yep.
I just wanted to clarify the point that-
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was referring to the white, the white bags. Again, as part of our agreement with them, they also pay all the costs for maintenance of what is now pretty significantly aging equipment, we have had, the town has not had to incur any expenses during, you know, the term of our agreement with them, so.
Who owns that equipment?
The town owns it, but they do all the maintenance. We basically, when, when the Board of Health had Mello take that over, and, and they took it over, at the time they took it over, the town was losing a, a lot of money annually, and there were some, there were some questionable practices at the time, and those were all remedied, but when we gave up the management control, we also, you know, kind of walked away from the pricing control and those types of things as well, with the exception of the directive from the Board of Health that recycling may remain free. So, that's where we are now, you know, the, the, certainly, the, the costs of hauling have increased significantly as well, so, you know, it's, I, I think we have two choices, we can either continue on our relationship with Mello, which, from my perspective, has been a very good relationship, we've, since they've taken over, our office has not fielded a single call, a single complaint, the Board of Health had one when they closed the transfer station during a snowstorm, so there wasn't a lot of advance notice, but other than that, it's been a very successful relationship. If we were to walk away from that, the alternative is to go to, I, I would say, we'd have to consider override for curbside pickup, or you, residents would have to enter into their own agreement with trash hauling companies.
There would be no Newbury option to just to-
Not without an override.
Get rid of your trash.
Alicia, I'd make a comment that I'm surprised we haven't had an increase before now.
And I'll make the comment that I'm just thankful that they're still taking the free recycling, 'cause that's huge, I mean, the, Mello's been very good to the town of Newbury.
The, the waste business is facing significant challenges right now, especially with the change in the world dynamic, and China taking less of recyclables and things, and we really do get a good deal right now, there's a lot of ups and downs that I feel like is the town we don't want to be subjected to in that industry, and in my time as chair before Alicia was, I had zero problems with that transfer station, like Tracy said, everything's been good, it's unfortunate the prices have had to come up a bit, but that's life right now.
Specialized business, and we're not in it.
Right.
Right.
I just have a comment, I think it's a great asset for the town to have, and it gives us choices.
That's right.
You know, I mean, we can, I mean, they could go to $10 a bag and, for a big one, and $5 a bag for a little one, but you, you still have a choice, you don't have to go there to get rid of your trash, so, I, I, I do think it's a good town asset, personal.
I do, too.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Tracy?
Just a comment?
No guests, Jerry?
I, I know there are a number of towns, I know Mello's where, where I came from, is one of many towns that have free recycling, and the reason it's free is to encourage people to recycle, because if people had to pay to recycle, they wouldn't recycle.
That's why, that's why Newbury does it, too.
Yep.
But I mean, not to, but the cost of recycling is taken care of by Mello being there, right?
I don't know, that's not the town of Newbury's business.
So, but I mean, but these other towns, Jerry, when you pay for your trash to be picked up at your house or something, you get free recycling, I mean, where, or they have recycling as part of the town's, a project that the town has, the town has the space, or the city has the space for recycling?
No, it, it's picked up with your trash, it was picked up with your trash, you had it segregated.
Okay.
Okay.
Nope, that's it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Under correspondence, we had an audit engagement letter from James Justy, is that how you pronounce that?
Justy, Justy, no coffee, Justy, just what he tells us.
And-
I would've done the same, Alicia.
I know. Meeting updates, I don't, I have none, does anybody have any meeting updates? Dana?
Yeah, we had a municipal building committee meeting this morning. I think, Tracy, we've engaged with Jeff Shaw, is that correct?
Correct.
To, to be the architect. We're still working on getting an OPM.
Yep.
Which is in progress, and they're doing some boring polls on, on, I believe, Thursday, weather permitting, I think I'm, I'm gonna try and stop by there in case there's some citizens that might have questions about what's going on, because there might be some going on there. So, that's really all I have to say about the municipal building committee, and the other update I had, I have, is Essex Veterans Committee, and we had a meeting since I've been here last, and I just want to say, and I, I, I got some stuff from Karen Tyler today about the people that were there, but there was a Wes Newbury Town Assessor at that meeting, and there was an Ipswich, yeah, am I saying that correctly?
Assessor?
Yeah, was also there, and Wes Newbury has approved the exemption that we're shooting for on, you know, this, this year at the annual town meeting, Wes Newbury has already approved theirs, and Ipswich is, is looking to approve it.
Good.
So, I'm just, I just want to shout out there that we're, Newbury's on the right track, and, and I think it, it makes us look really good in the community, because a lot of the communities are now on board with what we're doing, and I just think that that's awesome.
Yeah, it is awesome.
You know, so, good.
Yep. Any other meeting updates? I have the MMA, I got an email this morning from the Fiscal Policy Committee, they sent a letter to the new governor with our priorities, our budget priorities, as far as the state budget goes, and the annual conference, the annual meeting is two weekends, and I will be attending that again. That's it, I think that's it for me, for our meeting updates. We have review and approve of meeting minutes, so we have draft meeting minutes from 11:08.
Motion to approve.
I don't believe I was here that meeting. Nope, I wasn't here, right?
You were.
So, I'm gonna, yeah, you know what, I did go back and watch the meeting, so, okay. I want to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Draft minutes from November 30th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jerry Heavey?
I'll abstain, I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, Jerry, uh-
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Are they, you know what, did I skip over?
Dana, they're at the end.
Oh, oh, there is, there's a December, is it December 6th, is that?
We're doing November 30th, first.
Okay.
Page before.
Yeah.
I did the same thing.
I apologize, I don't even know, I don't know if I was there or not, but I, like you, I've reviewed them, I approve, yeah, yes.
Okay, so you're a yes, you were here, Dana, and the chair votes yes, and the next is December 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and then December 13th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Sleeping.
Roll call vote, actually, this is just Alicia Greco, votes yes, Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
And Dana Packer?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to sign warrants.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Dana Packer?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I move to adjourn.
Uh, second.
Okay, Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?